All right, let's call the Dune City Council regular meeting Wednesday, August 8th, 2018, to order at 6 o'clock. Uh, Jamie, can we do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mayor Forsen?
Here.
Council President Sheldon Meyer?
President.
Council Dug Wells?
Here.
Council Tom Mellon?
Here.
Council Bauer?
Here.
Council Susan Stone?
Here.
And Council Mark Henry, I have not heard from him.
All right, if you all can, put your heat in this place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any compa-- any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements, Jamie?
The Citizen Advisory Committee meeting regarding final review of the first three sections of Chapter 155 of the Dune City Code is scheduled for August 20th at 5:00 PM. The next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 23rd at 5:00 PM. The deadline to submit petitions for election as city council or mayor is 4:00 on August 23rd, so please get your petitions in as soon as possible. And the Emergency Preparedness Expo is scheduled at the Florence Events Center for August 25th.
Do we have any citizen input to items that are not on the agenda?
None. No one's on.
Thank you. New business, Lane County Animal Services IGA. I think they got passed out last meeting.
Distributed at last meeting. The one thing I did want to point out, um, in your packets, I believe I included a copy of the letter that came from the Lane County Office of Legal Counsel. I wanted to bring to your attention the 1-2 third paragraph, the last sentence of the third paragraph. The only way the county could provide these services would be with an IGA between the city and county, and the city adopting the county's animal control regulations in Lane Code 7, or 7.0.
7.0.
So I wanted to point out that it would require preparation of an ordinance to adopt the Lane County Animal Control Code as our own, for purposes of the IGA, should you choose to pursue that.
That makes sense to me. They have to have, we have to have something to go by before you call them. We're gonna have to know what it's about. And at a rate of, uh, what, 133.18 per hour? And if I'm reading that right, it's probably from the point that they leave there and show up here and get back for duty, right?
As far as I'm aware. That's what I would guess.
And typically, they'd be coming out of where? Eugene. Eugene.
Eugene.
Unless they got dispatch from some other place that they were already up to.
Right, within Lane County.
Correct. Okay. Mary?
Yes. Uh, I just have a question. Why do not our taxes pay for the cost of these folks coming here?
That's above my degree.
Well, I kinda got out of it because we're an incorporated city and if you don't serve the unincorporated part.
Kinda like the police. Yeah. And policing the same issue.
That's what I was given, Tom. You didn't really incorporate it, too.
So give them a different address when we call.
Just say it's Richard Thompson. Everybody use Richard Thompson.
That's right. So, any comments on it? Any pluses or minuses of this? We didn't really get to discuss it last time.
Does anyone know what the Lane County Code says?
No, I've not read the Lane County Code.
I could find it, Steph. We didn't look at it. I did a little bit of research, but didn't have the time to find it.
I think, I guess my main question mainly was, and I don't know the answer to it, is are we having enough complaints that it would be worth going through the effort of adopting those codes and then paying these people to do that? And I don't get those complaints, so.
No.
Staff does?
It varies, and it runs in spurts. When we get one dog a complaint, we start getting several for some reason, I don't know why, they just start rolling in, and then they stop for a while. That's why when I called them, I asked for an on-as-needed basis.
Right.
Per call. Because, you know, we might get one call a year, and we might get a bunch of calls a year. I just never know what's gonna happen. Sorry.
Well, I don't see anything to change. I believe I was the one who started all along with getting rid of what we did have in Dune City. To me, what I don't like about this is in the IGA is, uh, having to have a never, uh, regulation, an animal control regulation. I don't like the fee, the $133. Um, and I, again, the council, we're not talking daily with the, with the citizens like you guys see them all the time, and you're, you get to hear it, you know? I understand that. Uh, I, maybe we need to keep track so we can tell how many we get it, you know, over a period of time, and see if it is a, is a big problem, or a not-so-big problem. Right now, I, I'm, I would be against entering into an agreement with Lane County on this.
I guess my, um, viewpoint is a little different than Dune's, uh, which is probably not a big surprise.
Yeah.
Uh, but it just seems to me if we have a need on a, on an as-needed basis because of a bad dog or something, and since we aren't requiring that they be even immunized anymore, it just seems like I would, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable knowing that we had something. We don't have to use it unless we decide we're gonna use it, but we would at least have an opportunity to do something if we needed to.
Maybe if we could write a regulation up that was that restrictive, and it wasn't just a nuisance dog, somebody peeing in somebody's yard or whatever. If it was a bad dog that was killing animals, you know, if it was at that level, I could, I could see it a little bit more than, you know, just.
But if that being their entire code, it might be.
Right. That's my concern, is we have to adopt their entire code, and.
That'd be back to square one of it.
We tried to do that, and that's why it failed. It was so comprehensive and so complicated.
Well, in truth, Dune City had an IGA of Lane, Lane County, so our code was an adoption of their code. Um, and we tried, the city, um, based on discussions that had been held at, at goal-setting session that year, had tried to take over operation of the licensing of the animals because we saw that as an opportunity for the city, and we could definitely break even and possibly make a little bit off of it. Um, and would open up the communication between people so we know, well, this is their dog. I've seen that dog, I know where it lives, and this kind of thing. Um, as for this, this was brought up only for those circumstances that I can't solve on my own. I mean, as code enforcement officer, that's the first thing I try to do, is resolve it.
Sure.
And it would be just like what you heard.
I know you did have a pretty big issue here about a month or so ago.
Yes.
Yeah. That would have been one that could have came in handy then, for sure.
But for those situations, just to call them, we have to adopt everything that they do all the time, as for those special circumstances.
That's why I don't like it.
Well, let's, I'd like to suggest that we do take a look at what it is that they have, as you were suggesting.
Yeah. Could we get that, could we all get a copy of it?
Sure.
Can I think that? And that might be a good place to start.
I, I, I was one who voted in favor of having.
In keeping it?
Yeah, of keeping it the last time around, and I'll just say again that I, I do think something is necessary because it concerns me that, um, without anything in place, um, there could be a serious problem, and there would essentially, unless I'm missing something, there would not be a response, um, from the county, from the city, from Florence, from anywhere.
That's what it sounds like. One of the angles that keeps coming up in my head is if the voters decide to go with the, you know, joining in with the circuit court.
Right.
That would give, I think, would that give you more peace then, Jamie? To, to, you know, on a local level, without calling?
Not if you don't adopt code.
If we had our own code?
Yeah, if you had your own code.
Then it wouldn't, you wouldn't need an IGA with Lane County then.
Well, at that point, I don't know what that would look like, but it would offer an opportunity to issue a citation.
Which would. That they would have to appear to.
That they would have to appear.
And I know that worked because I was that person.
Oh.
So, I know that, I know the system works.
And she should write the code.
Thank you.
But then there's always my facetious comment that, you know, it's, there's not a problem that a good taxidermist can't fix.
Sounds to me like we're kind of all in favor, let's get a look at their codes, see what it has. Jamie, our code that we did have was, was it reflective?
It was an earlier version of the Lane County Code. Their code has changed somewhat.
Uh-huh, well, yeah.
Not a whole lot, but some. So I'll, I'll get it out to you, and we'll table this.
Can you dredge up the, can you dredge up the one we had?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I'd like to see them both, and, because I think if, if everything goes correct in November, then it might be, then we've got something that we can really talk about.
Keep it in house.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Do you think, Mayor?
Yes.
May I inquire of Rapunzel? Do you think they need to table a motion? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Set va-- oh, wait a minute. I guess set values on unimproved roadways. Um, I assume that we're talking about all of the.
Silkus Lake Platte.
Yeah, Silkus.
Were given to the city.
Right. Figure it. Explain how we ended up with those to everyone, if they're not aware of it? Well, as best as you can.
Aren't I? When the Silkus Lake Club Platte was platted, which I believe was.
1909.
1909, yes. It was really early, certainly before Dune City became a city. Um, the roads were dedicated to the individuals who owned properties in the Silkus Lake Club Platte. That was 1909, and as long as the original developers were there, they were receiving the tax bill for the roadways, and they were paying it. But they'd passed away, they moved away, and eventually got to the point where no one was paying the taxes. So Lane County foreclosed upon those roadways and took them back. They then inquired if we wanted to take all of the Silkus Lake Club Platte roadways, which at that particular moment in time, we were having a horrible time with a flooding issue on one of those roadways, that the city's hands were tied because we couldn't fix it. It wasn't our roadway, it wasn't our jurisdiction, and the county refused to fix it, and our residents were suffering as a result. So our response at that point in time was to the county was, well, we'll take your unimproved roadways, but we're not gonna take the improved roadways unless you fix them. And they told us to take a fly-in lane. But they gave us the unimpro-- unimproved roadways and valued them at five bucks for all of them. So now we have all these unimproved roadways, which are basically 30-foot wide.
33.
Is it 33? 33-foot wide easements through people's property, or between people's property. The discussion that was had by the council at the time, after committee discussion discussed it, um, was that we really have, the city really has no need for most of these, some of them we will, and some of, and all of them, we will have to ensure that all parcels have access before we do anything. But there are some that only serve one or two people, and, uh, they are the property owners, and if they want to acquire them, then perhaps we should offer an opportunity for them to do that. Um, there was debate about the best way to go about it, but because the county actually deeded it to the city, it has to be done with a property sale. It can't be done with a vacation or any of those. It is definitely a property that is owned by the city that would need to be disposed by the city in the manner that cities have to follow its state law to dispose a property. Um, at this point in time, it was, I think the last quote I got was something like $6,000 to $10,000 to get an appraisal done of each of the roadways. Um, in discussions with our council, she suggested that, uh, the council has the right to set the value at whatever they want. Um, the mayor would need to excuse himself from discussion of this issue because he does have an interest. Um, but I need something to go on. I've got people lining up wanting to do this.
And you, and you need a map to make sure none of you have any of these either. Because remember, these were, these were, this was a map that was made up in 1909, and they drew straight lines, and these straight lines, and they gave no, uh.
Yeah, there was no top or.
Top or graphical, you know, whether it could even be a road or not, so. And they're all over, okay?
If I remember correctly, we had that 33 feet, if there were abutting property owners, we were gonna possibly split it, each one could have half. If one of them didn't want half, then the other one was able to buy the whole right away. The other thing I remember, we were always going to keep a utility easement, uh, right away on all of the properties.
That's assuming that you had no other way to get to that property.
No, utility easement would be for power, water.
Oh, oh, should we ever put in water?
Yeah, for whatever reason.
Good point.
That's what I'm trying to point out there.
If we, either, either at a dollar or at $100,000, whatever, if we somehow got them back in the hands of the property owners on one side or the other, does that property then become part of the tax base?
Yes.
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 Okay. So even if we sold them for a very low price, there is still a net benefit in that sense?
To the county.
To the county. Okay. Yeah.
Well, we would if, you know, the ballot question passes and that's on the ballot.
You're right. Good point. So that, that adds to the property, and then you still have to do prop, you still have to do property line adjustments.
Correct.
To show whether that 15 feet or 33 feet, you know, how that impacts that on every lot that, that happens, so. Yes. Okay.
No matter what we ask for the property, the interested parties are still gonna have that survey, looking at that surveying fee though, wouldn't they?
Yes. I don't anticipate that the city would be paying any of those fees. It would be up to the interested parties to have the surveys done and the legal descriptions prepared.
Right. So there're gonna, there'd be some cost involved for.
Yes, there will be. I mean, I don't, as a city, I don't mind if you guys approve it, doing the deeds. That part's really pretty easy once somebody else prepares the legal description.
I'd like to see the property get into home or vans. It's not doing any good for anybody to sit there, you know? I'm sure the property owners could use another 30 feet or 15 feet, whatever it may be, half or all. Might be some round.
I feel the same way. I think we need to ensure that the city's not gonna, you know, be burdened with an appraisal fee, and it sounds like we're not.
Not if you guys set a fee. I don't know all the details about it, but I will run it by the county. As soon as you tell me what you're thinking, then I can run it by our legal counsel and make sure that that meets all the.
Do you have something in writing that shows you how cities dispose of excess land?
I believe I do somewhere, because I've asked that question before, and they've provided me the copies of it already.
Uh, because I think in this case, because, because the county did what they did, I understand, I, I've been working on this for over three years, almost four years before the city, before the county turned around and said, "No, we don't wanna deal with this anymore, let's give it to the city." Because it's no longer a vacation, uh, the vacation of a land is a total different process than disposing of city excess property. So I wanna make sure that we're legally looking at the differences.
Vacation.
Right. Because, because we get into the different languages, and I think we better be very, very careful, should we, should we do it at all? And make sure we know exactly what that is, because most people that own land and say, "Oh, I do want that, you know, unimproved property," are thinking typically in vacation because that's how that normally happens, and are not thinking about how to dispose of excess property. So, yeah, if you could.
I don't believe I have a dog if I, I don't believe I have any next to me, and I, so I, I can say, I would just like to see, as long as the property owners involved with these parcel are willing to take on that surveying fee, I'd like to just get it to them at a minimal price, five bucks or, I, I don't think this needs to be a, you know, a money grab by the city. If we weren't getting anything from them before, it'd help the citizens, and I think long-term, we'd be getting money from the tax base on a large piece of property.
Do you want me to go get the maps real quick? Or do you wanna wait?
No, let's, let's get it all together on time, because I think it's gonna be a.
Okay, are you gonna want, um, me to make arrangements for legal counsel to either prepare a memo or, or show up? Or be on teleconference?
Well, let's see. I, in my opinion, it would depend on, uh, it would depend on the ordinances, the state ordinance that covers the disposal of city property. If that is reasonably clear, then we don't need counsel. If it's not, then we probably need counsel.
It's probably very luminous. But I'll, I'll see what I can find.
Take a look at it, and make the determination of do we need counsel or not.
All right.
Just from the way it reads.
It's like, see, move ahead, yeah, good thing.
Before we leave this topic, Jamie, it was probably a year or a year and a half ago when you and I were discussing putting some emergency supplies on some of those easements. As, as, are you still thinking along those lines that this would only be for certain easements and not for others? Because I don't remember if we actually identified which ones we wanted to keep at that point. Do you recall?
The one thing I do know is that because it is a transaction, an actual sale transaction, is each one will need to be considered individually, and those are the things that would come into question. Is this a piece of property that we do want to get rid of? Um, or is, would it be a great place for a cell tower or surplus, or emergency supplies? These kinds of things would come into, I don't think it's, it's fair to ask one person and to make that decision. We were working as a group, as a committee, but this way it goes to the city council. There's a hearing, oh, you can have a hearing if you want to, or at least you can hear from the public on their thoughts with regard to each piece if they, if they have something that they want to say.
And you have some people who are anxious to see this move forward, you said?
Certainly, no.
Yeah, okay. A few?
Right now, it's, it's a little, it's about five.
Okay.
At this point. And then we have those that, they're all neighbors, and they haven't spoken to each other in years, and it does require an agreement of the parties, so I'm not spoken, I don't know what's gonna happen with those.
And the interesting, another interesting aspect about living where we live is, and the one I talked to you about, is there's apple orchards that have been planted on it, there's buildings that are already on it, so, I mean, you're gonna, it's not gonna be as.
Easy.
Simplistic as it might seem.
There was going to be a complication on almost every single one of them.
Yeah, and is there a fence that's been built and wasn't there in the first place?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So it should, it should be interesting. All right. You good on that one? Thank you very much. Actually, it should be fun to work on. Uh, do you remember how many there were, Jamie?
How many roads?
Yeah, it was, it was a lot.
I wanna say 19 or 20.
20.
And it had fixed.
And.
At least John had it.
And they were also segmented, like, between.
Right.
Yeah, so it could, it could be as many as 40 of them because of the way the roads run and don't run. So it, it'll be an interesting project, to say the least. All right, at this point, we're going to adjourn at 6:25 for executive session. We hold the right to reconvene and reopen a session, regular session. This is pursuant to ORS 192.6602H to consult with council concerning legal rights and duties of public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Board and staff will recess into the executive session. Legal counsel is allowed in, but they, I mean, I'm sorry. Media is involved, is allowed in, but they are not allowed to report on anything that they are witnessing here. Now you're a legal counsel.
I'm getting some water.
Get somebody quick. All right, we'll adjourn at 6:26. We shall adjourn.
I just played my account three Hyundai land.
Well, that will reopen the regular session at 6:55.
For camouflage paint.
At this point, I would entertain a motion declaring that Rapunzel is Pur's employee. So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Third.
Any conversation?
We adore her.
Thank you, Rapunzel. Other than that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that's official. Thank you very much. All right, Mayor's Report. Uh, Jamie and staff put on an extremely nice dinner for visiting mayors. Two weeks ago, a week, two weeks ago, whatever, just time flies when we're having fun. We had excellent comments, they did a great job, a whole lot of, a whole lot of work went into it, and we had pretty good attendance considering what they were doing. I will also want to let you know that October, I will probably be missing the October meeting, so Sheldon will probably have to.
I will probably be missing the October meeting too, because I'm gonna. Just because Australia.
They don't have phones? Could we hold the meeting there?
I think you have to hold it left-handed.
Great point.
All right. So be, be warned.
I'm gonna have to find something to do in October, too, is that?
You're next.
Well, it tells me when I should take my vacation.
All right, Community Center Report.
Been working on the roof, getting it ready for winter. Uh, I don't know how many little burrows worth of pine cones and needles came, or kind of, up there. But probably two more hours, and then I'll broadcast some, uh, the moss killers sort of, come back, and it'll be ready for winter then. Water quality?
You got the report there. Um, all of the safety reports look good, numbers are great, better than, than I thought, other than the rest of the equipment was low, but, um, we got good quality water in, in Woking.
Richard Palmer, what it works. What you have for us today?
Um, Huckleberry Lane, the drainage and widening.
Oh, bids. We got two, two bids on that.
Bids, we got two, two bids on that. Ray Wells came in at forty-three thousand seven fifty-two. And D J Miller came in at sixty-two nine fifty. Talked to Norm about it and basically Norm's kinda given the city a pretty good deal. He's just trying to help out, because I questioned the, quite the spread and what he was doing. And he said, no, he, he wanted to do something. We had a meeting out there and walked the project pretty extensively and, and he knows what we're looking for and what we want and can do it. There's just gonna be a, a few problems with some water lines that I think we're going to encounter from people pulling out of the lake across the road there. And so the deal that I kinda made with him was, as soon as we don't know where they are, we, we have no idea, I'm gonna try to do some research and find out who it is that's pulling that water out and go talk to them. But I, I told him that when we hit something like that, then the city will just have to step in, we'll have to get it fixed, we'll buy the parts and, you know, everybody work together and try to get it fixed, because hard to tell.
Councilor Wells may be able to shed some light, because I think Alderwood's, I mean, Furnaker's.
Furnaker's.
Calls across there.
Yeah, it does. I don't know exactly where, but it does for sure, yeah, pumps down there.
Well, I was kinda hoping that Jamie could use her research and find out who has it and then just go to each place and say, look, at this time, we're gonna be doing this. It would be neat to see, if we can find a couple of people, we might be able to do a trace on their power running the pump and then go back and, and trace and, and get an idea of where they're at.
I believe everybody on my loop is in the same holding tank that comes down, back down to us. The other ones, you know, in that general vicinity, but man, I don't, they're just, I don't think they even got a holding tank. It's each one, individuals to their house, I think, you know, so.
Yes, and, and I do have some information from the state permits and I have been pulling those out so that we get copies of the maps, so we know where the lines are supposed to be located and who might, they belong to. The only one I don't have details for is Furnaker's. And so if someone could provide, Richard or myself, with information on where that line runs, I don't know if anybody's gonna know, I don't know.
Where, that'll probably help a dozen, you know, root breaks, but they were usually just in the community. But down around the road is, they were seeing it there.
Okay, well, then we will just gonna have to go with what.
So if it breaks, we'll fix it, you know.
Is that gravity fit?
It pumps up to a tank of gravity.
There is power, so.
Yeah, we have.
Well, that's what I was hoping, is that we find somebody that.
Trace it.
That, then we could trace it back that way.
Right.
And at least kind of an idea where something is.
I don't know, Jake Mann put it in early sixty, so.
Because we don't know what depth or.
No, the word shallow.
Because we have to go, that, that whole intersection there, Evolver and Huckleberry, I mean, we're gonna go plum across that whole thing with a culvert, so we're.
You'll find it.
We're gonna find it. Anyway.
Could, could one of you refresh my memory as to, as to what the, the needed? This is a drainage issue, is that right?
Yes.
Mainly or totally?
It's mainly a drainage issue and widening a part of the road there. How would I explain that? We're gonna start where the, the roadie bushes, the.
By Fern, you draw it down.
It's where the, the, it used to be a cul-de-sac.
Oh, right.
Right, the white spot, by where.
Yeah, just pass that a little bit, as you kinda kept me in the route turns through there. And, and we're gonna start there and go all the way down, making about three feet wide or a pavement all the way to, to right road.
Willink.
Or to Willink.
So you're gonna go around the big tree, or what's gonna happen to the big tree in the road? That big spruce?
Well, we'll stop before then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see that tree happen to accident or something.
There's a lot on Fern there.
But we're gonna widen that and then this, when we had all the big rainfall, we had a tremendous amount of puddling there. And there's nowhere for the water to go. And it, it was running into the lady's house there across the way and it.
I was afraid somebody was gonna start stalking it.
Yeah, it was, you know, and, and there supposedly was, there's a culvert across the road, but we cannot find it, it's.
It seemed to me, I remember one, when that was all gravel, before any pavement was laid, everything was. Something there ran off down towards children's place, you know, south, not cutting across.
All right, yeah, so we're just gonna replace all that, drain that and take it down to the catch basins that are down there on, on the.
Auto burn.
Hopefully go back to the lake.
And what's the timeframe, will this be done before the rains presumably start this year?
Um, yeah, that's what we're trying to get scheduled with Norm now. It'll only take about a week and a half to, to do the work. It's just when he can get time to, to do it. We're hoping that it will be started at the end of October and done within, guaranteed within two weeks, you know. So it, and it shouldn't be too much of an impedance for people going in and out, because we're just gonna kinda be on the one side of the road, so one lane will be open. And we're not gonna impact the roadies, that, that's been a big concern that I've met with everybody. And I said, no, that little bunch of roadies.
Put a neighborhood.
Well, we're gonna put up a barrier between the pavement and those roadies. And the guy was showing me where everybody keeps, he put rocks there and everybody keeps driving over onto the roadies, so. We'll fix that.
Can this work proceed rain or shine? Or?
Everything except for the pavement.
Okay, so I just, I mean, we don't obviously know what the weather's gonna do.
We don't, the pavement won't take very long for what we have to do, but the rest of the work, whether it's rain or not, fairly will be done. And we're putting shoulder rock and stuff on both sides of the road and fixing that whole section. We talked about going, you know, starting at Clear Lake and coming in and trying to widen what we could and fix that up through there, but there's just, at the time right now, there's just too many big trees and things.
That's where the curse come from, all big trees.
Any more questions?
It would be helpful if you would at least put on the record consideration for which one.
Yeah, I, I sure, I like the Norm Wells, Ray Wells, look at it to your eyes, little bit. Always, and no ways work.
Yeah. Well, I, I was really concerned with such a big gap that I've talked to both sides and Norm made it very plain to me what he's, what he's up to. You know, he lives out there. He said, no, I just kinda threw this out there. He was hoping that, as me being an inspector, that I'm kinda nice on him, you know, you too. He wants to do it and do it right, maybe not.
Was there a second?
What was the accepted proposal?
The little bid. I'll second that.
Okay, there you go.
It wasn't a motion, no, I'm making a motion.
I make a motion to accept the Ray Wells bid of, I can't see the number.
Forty-three, seven fifty-two.
Those, those numbers.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, there you go, thank you. Emergency services report, do you have that in the back up? Is there something other than that you want to go?
I don't know that there is anything up in port other than the new fire restrictions and reminder of the expo on the twenty-fifth. And then high points in my report would be, I pretty much talked about everything. Of course, we did have the one issue on the road brushing and liming, which you guys have seen. Everything has been turned over to the new auditor for the books. And everything's been accepted and ready to go for the ballot questions.
Good to be ordered.
I would sure like to see something that talks about us being in extreme fire danger without any great foresight. Scared me of the rest of the state coming up. I have to make sure that we all are being extra careful and.
The newsletter is drafted. The newsletter is drafted except for the last, the middle two pages. So it is ready, about ready to go.
Is this gonna be in it?
Something to that effect, I'm gonna have to amend what's there, because when I wrote that, it was back before, it was in extreme danger. Someone, someone's had to be in this, maybe I'll just flip over a lot, I'll take whole page.
Yeah.
I might have to write something.
Duke, I'd just like to comment on this road vegetation removal letter that we got here. I think that Jamie's response is very good in the letter and I could thank Richard for all the work he does keeping our roads looking so good.
Tom?
I agree with Duke, would also want to make sure that the marijuana issue is going to be on the ballot for November for the vote. Everything's done, paperwork, we're good.
It is Andrew County and they're pregnant.
One, two, six.
Yeah.
Bob? I agree with everybody.
All right. In that case, we'll adjourn at seven eleven, not two seven eleven. First time I say that, you see more.
That's when they get up.